Greetings fellow federationists. I want to welcome all of you to the Indiana State Convention this year. This year it will be a virtual convention being held anywhere and everywhere.
Welcome to you all. We are so excited about this year's convention. We hope that you will join us on the eighth and that you will be with us until the end of the convention. We are going to have a good time.
Want to also say that this is the Blind Equality Achievement Month, also known as BEAM. It has been changed from the Blind Month. So Blind Equality Achievement Month. And we are going to be celebrating all blind people in all aspects of their life. You won't want to miss it. So we're going to beam us up. Beam Blind Equality Achievement Month.
Thank you all for joining us this year for the convention. We hope that you will stick around and we hope that you will also tune in to Lee Martin with Newsline and hear some of the exciting things that are happening here in Indiana and all across the state. So just listen in and always feel free to give Lee a call if you have questions about Newsline and they're there to help you. So welcome once again.
Please get in touch with Newsline for the Blind. It is an awesome program. It's for all blind people and print disabled. Thank you very much and have a wonderful convention.
We are the Newsline and we read NFB Newsline.
As I travel the nation, I read NFB Newsline.
I live in Valparaiso, Indiana, and I listen to my local news on NFB Newsline. As a student, I enjoy reading current events on NFB Newsline.
Learn more by calling 855-963-6476 or visit nfbnewsline-in.org.
Subscribe free to NFB Newsline today.
We are here at this Town Hall meeting for the National Federation of the Blind State Convention of Indiana. And we have a very special guest with us today. Our national representative from our national office, Ms. Denise Savant. She has so much information and she has so many questions from our affiliate members throughout the state of Indiana, of the National Federation of the Blind. And we just want to welcome you all to listen and learn from this Town Hall meeting. There will be so many good questions and so many great answers and so much education. So Denise, this is a very special day for us in the state of Indiana with your presence. And we just want to say welcome to Indiana.
Thank you so much. It's so good to be back with you guys again. I was here in 2017. I was in person. I wish that we could be in person again. I truly enjoyed my time in 2017 when I came to your convention. And I'm really looking forward to this Town Hall. I'm looking forward to the convention and just really participating in the Indiana affiliate, which is very similar, you know, to mine. We actually sit alongside of each other, you know. So we're down here in the Midwest, you know, helping to raise the expectation for blind people and helping folks to know that blindness is not the characteristic that defines them or their future and that they can live the lives that they want. So together, you know, the Illinois affiliate and the Indiana affiliate have often partnered with each other. And I'm just looking forward to this weekend.
And we're looking forward to spending that time with you. I mean, even though it's Zoom, it's an opportunity that we have been looking forward to for quite some time. Now, for those who were not at our previous convention, Denise, tell us a little bit about you.
Okay, so I was born and raised here in Chicago, Illinois. And I went to the University of Missouri in Columbia. I majored in political science and then went to law school there. I then practiced law for well over 32 years. I worked in the public sector of the legal profession, working for the Will County Legal Assistance Program for two and a half years and then for the Office of the Public Defender for 30 years. And both of those organizations represented indigent people, one on the civil side of things and one on the criminal side, those were people who could not afford their own attorneys. I am my mom and dad's only child. I have been blind all of my life, though I had a little bit of eyesight when I was growing up. And I am a late comer to the National Federation of the Blind. I did not really get active until 2005, though I knew about the Federation and I would come to various conventions from time to time. But in 2005, I finally joined. I became active. I held various offices in the state, finally was state president for six years. I just stepped aside out of that role in November of 2020. I'm currently serving on our national board, helping out our president and our members in whatever way I can there. I'm active in my church. I've been in the same church for now almost 25 years, Christian Tabernacle Church here on Chicago South Side. And I'm a member of the Board of Directors there. I'm actually the secretary for right now. And then I also serve on the Access Living Board. And I also chair the American Bar Association Commission on Disability Rights. And I think, you know, my hobbies are, you know, I've done cross-country skiing when I have an opportunity to do so. I've recently taken up tandem biking. And so I enjoy things like that. And other than that, I'm just, you know, like everyone else, trying to stay safe and healthy during the time of this pandemic.
Well Denise, you're a woman of so many hats. And I tell you, I can see why our national president, Mark Ricobono, is proud to have you as our national rep, as he assigns you to us. And we're so glad to have you here as well. There are so many programs that the National Federation of the Blind offers. And one of those great programs is the National Federation of the Blind Newsline. Would you want to tell us a little bit about how Newsline impacts your life and how you think it should impact other people's lives that are eligible for the service?
Well, let me tell you, I love, love, love NFB Newsline because it actually affords me the opportunity to read my local newspaper, the Chicago Tribune, the Chicago Sun Time. Anytime I want, I can look at the Washington Post or the New York Times or go to, you know, read the Braille Monitor on NFB Newsline. I really tell you, it does help me to stay informed, especially, you know, when it's time for election. I can follow, you know, current affairs. I am a political science major, so I do like to follow current affairs. And I really wish that I would have been, it would have been available to me as a young kid growing up, when you'd have to do some kind of presentation on current affairs. It's really a great resource for both, you know, classwork, for just pleasure reading and information because you have all the state information channels are all over it. So you can find out about happenings in your state on NFB Newsline. I think blind people as a rule, we're some of the most connected people in the American population. And I think it's partly due to a service like NFB Newsline. It's totally free of charge. You can access it 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It is on many different platforms. I usually read it on my iPhone, but you can read it on your computer. You can read it on, well, this is going to set her off, Ms. Alexa, you know. And you can also access it on the Victor Reader Stream. So all of those different platforms, you have access to NFB Newsline. And it's a great tool for, you know, us as federations to get to know other blind people that might not come to our attention. Because let's face it, seniors, you know, when they lose vision, one of the things, the two of the things that they fear most is, you know, driving and we're not yet able to do anything about that yet. But also they want to be able to read their newspaper. Well, you know, somebody will hopefully tell them about NFB Newsline or they'll hear about it somehow. And then a coordinator like yourself, Lee, can get them, you know, signed up and talk about the Federation and get them to chapter meetings either in person or by calling in. So it's, I really, like I said, I love Newsline.
Well Florence, I guess we don't have a whole lot to say now.
Well, I was going to say, if you are, if anybody is listening, for those who are listening to this and if you have not signed up for NFB Newsline, you have heard it. If you're blind, print challenged, and cannot access print, printed documents, and just know that NFB Newsline is a free audio information service. And it's available for you and to you, and you will have that information right at your fingertips.
Okay, well Florence, you want to take time to tell them a little bit about the KNFB Reader Basic?
Oh, I can certainly do that. That's one of my favorite features. The KNFB Basic Reader, it allows me to independently access printed documents. If I get, you know, once I get my mail, I can open up my KNFB Reader and it'll read my documents to me. And it's a, I mean, again, that's free. It's a part of the NFB Newsline. And I love that tool.
Well, I'll tell you, one of my most recent experiences with that device, I didn't want to bother anyone really. I normally just say, I'll borrow a pair of eyes, but you know, sometimes we don't have them around. And I was looking at some lotion. I have different types of lotions and soaps and they all shake the same. And so I said, let me try my KNFB Reader on this. And I was so impressed with how it read off of that bottle that, I mean, it was just, I mean, it even read down to the very bottom of it says, "Made in China." So, you know, there's a lot of information that we get and this here service provides us that and helps us to be independent citizens in our daily lives. So check out the NFB Newsline and I'm sure that you will agree with us that it is a great service.
The National Federation of the Blind knows that blindness is not the characteristic that defines you or your future. Every day we raise the expectations of blind people because low expectations create obstacles between blind people and our dreams. You can live the life you want. Blindness is not what holds you back.
Welcome to our Town Hall meeting. We have Representative Denise Savant and she is going to entertain some questions from our affiliate members. Our first question comes from one of our youngest affiliate members, Ms. Jordan DeBro from the Circle City Chapter. And her question is.
Hello, Ms. Savant. Welcome to the Indiana State Convention. My name is Jordan and I'm a member of the Circle City Chapter, Indianapolis, Indiana. And my question is, what are the duties of a national rep of the NFB?
So I want to at least take it kind of, you know, step back a little just to inform some of our younger members and perhaps people who are new to the Federation. We are a national organization and we have a national president, Mark Ricobono, and he is in Baltimore, Maryland. And we have 52 affiliates, which include the 50 states plus the District of Columbia and Puerto Rico. And all of the affiliates, just like at the national level, have conventions, which are the supreme authority of the affiliate. But President Ricobono likes to visit, you know, the different conventions. But obviously with 52 of us affiliates, he's unable to do that. So he sends out national representatives, usually a board member, but it doesn't have to be, to bring the message of the Federation. So our duties are many. We bring the national report on the morning of the opening of convention, where we advise the members and the different affiliates about what is happening in the National Federation of the Blind. We deliver a banquet speech at the end of usually the Saturday, where we talk about important topics as it relates to blindness in our organization. We meet the members of the affiliate, answer their questions, identify and encourage new members in the Federation or leaders in the Federation. We help the state president however we can. Wherever the state president needs help, that's where we come in. We also send a report back to President Ricobono, letting him know about what we observed at the affiliate's convention, new leaders, new ideas, if there are any potential problems. And this is not to, you know, cause any issue with the affiliate, but it's just to let President Ricobono know if there's any way that he can help an affiliate president and the members. So, you know, our duties are several and we are usually in for the weekend and we are with you from the time that you open your convention with pre-convention activities to the time the president brings down the gavel to adjourn the convention.
Thank you for that.
Our next guest is Mr. Alex Ginlan and he is the vice president of newly formed Ad Large Chapter. So Alex, what is your question for our national rep, Ms. Denise Savant?
So Denise, I know it was a while before you officially joined the NFB. I believe it was 2005. But it was noted that you had attended some prior conventions and formed some connections with some contacts from the National Association of Blind Lawyers. So I was just wondering, who were some of those connections and contacts and how did that impact you?
Okay, so I met a lot of people at the National Association of Blind Lawyers meeting during the convention. So that would include people like Scott LaBarre, the late Charlie Brown from the Virginia affiliate. I met Larry Povinelli. I met, and of course, I had already met Patty Chang. And, you know, really, at the time that I was coming, I was practicing criminal law, criminal appellate law. And there wasn't really anybody in the division at that time who engaged in that type of practice. It was only one other attorney who was also from Chicago that did criminal trial work. So we were the only ones really doing criminal law. But the most important thing that I received from, you know, just coming to the meetings was seeing other blind lawyers, regardless of their field, practicing law, sharing tips and tricks on how to manage, you know, accessibility concern, how to use technology, how to use readers, how the ADA would apply when we would request, you know, accessibility if we were working for an entity. And this was invaluable because it really taught me that I had the same concerns that other people did, but there were answers for my concerns and I found them at the meeting. Now later on, my contact with Scott LaBarre and the late Charlie Brown would lead me to becoming active in the American Bar Association because I had, by the, joined the Federation and because Charlie and Scott knew me, Charlie reached out and asked if I would come and be a part of the Commission on Disability Rights. I didn't practice disability rights law, but I am a person, a lawyer with a disability. And so I have the lived experience of someone with a disability. I did, I got on and I stayed connected to the Bar Association. And because of those two, and particularly Charlie, I am now the Chair of the Commission on Disability Rights. I'm on my third and final year since I'm only allowed to serve three consecutive one-year terms. If it hadn't been for my meeting Scott and Charlie and at least establishing that initial contact, I never would have been chairing the Commission on Disability Rights, let alone joining the ABA.
That's awesome. Job well done to you and keep up the good work. And my final question, this may be a little bit off the beaten path, still with criminal law. What's been the toughest case that you've been involved in and what do you think you learned from it?
Well, you know, I really couldn't pick one case, but I, you know, there were several cases where I felt like, because let me just back up and say, I did, for the most part, appellate practice and also post-conviction practice. And one thing you learn is that once the state gains a conviction, no matter what evidence you may discover later or what errors may have happened at the trial, it is very difficult to overturn a verdict. And you really have to work very hard to get that done. So I know there were, you know, there was one case where I had a post-conviction case where a young man was convicted of murder. He had an alibi. His alibi appeared to be pretty tight, but the problem is it was his family members. He got convicted and there was evidence that surfaced that, you know, there was a motive for the state's witnesses to testify falsely. They contradicted themselves. I had another case where there was a murder and someone alleged self-defense and state witnesses again told several different stories and yet they, you know, convicted him. Now, we were able to get that charge reduced because although it wasn't, you know, at the minimum, the evidence showed that he was acting, you know, he thought he was acting in self-defense, but his defense may have been unreasonable. But we were able to get the charge reduced and get some time off of his sentence. In addition to that, our office would represent parents accused of abusing or neglecting their children on appeal. So I had a couple of cases in which I kind of thought that there were some irregularities in the system. And I actually argued one of those cases in the Illinois Supreme Court. And then in the other case, I did a petition for what they call writ of certiorari to the United States Supreme Court, asking for hearings, trying to get these things corrected. So again, it just lets you know our system and how it's set up. And, you know, by definition, it is designed to be tough to reverse a conviction. It's just that you see, you know, inequities in the system. And when you see that you have somebody who is, you know, could be potentially wronged, it really does, you really are conflicted about it.
Yeah. Well Denise, thank you so much for answering my questions this morning. And I look forward to your reports this weekend, as well as what I'm sure will be a terrific state convention.
Thank you.
Our next question to Ms. Savant comes from Mr. Ray Montgomery, who is a Circle City Chapter member. And Ray, what is your question?
Yes, thank you for having me on the NFB Newsline today. My question to Ms. Savant is, recently we just had the Washington Seminar and there was a lot of legislation that the NFB is trying to get introduced. Really wanted to know where we stand right now with the Access Technology Affordability Act and other legislation that was introduced during the Washington Seminar.
Okay, so I would say the top piece of legislation is the Access Technology Affordability Act. That's the legislation that would allow for a $2,000 tax credit for blind people to be able to purchase access technology for necessary for employment and education and independent living. And that's HR 431 in the House and it's 212 in the Senate. And we actually have 114 cosponsors and it is now part of the Budget Reconciliation Act. And if you've been following the news, you know that, you know, that's, you know, that trying to get that passed, it's being worked on right now. I will tell you that Representative Ann-Jory Carson from Indiana's 7th District is your only cosponsor. There are 27 cosponsors in the Senate and one of those is Senator Todd Young, one of your cosponsors. Recently, it was introduced, the, let's see, I think it's called the Medical Device Nonvisual Accessibility Act, and that's HR 4853. And that was recently introduced by Representative Jan Shikowsky, who is from Illinois' 9th Congressional District. And in a nutshell, this legislation calls, you know, calls for the Food and Drug Administration to promote nonvisual accessibility standards for Class II and Class III medical devices that have digital displays. This standard would apply to devices such as glucometers, sleep, amnia machines, blood pressure monitors, thermometers, and oximeters. And, you know, what this does is it helps blind people who have illnesses. and have to put up with digital displays have a way to accessing the information from these displays. That legislation has six cosponsors. Unfortunately, there's none from Indiana right now. What was not part of the Washington Seminar, but is always uppermost in our mind, is the transitions to competitive integrated employment. And that now does have a bill number. Bill number, it occurs after Washington Seminar was over. That's 2373, HR 2373. And what this does, it phases out the payment of subminimum wages to people with disabilities over a four-year period of time. And it will sunset the Section 14(c) of the Fair Labor Standards Act. You don't have any cosponsors for that yet either. And I don't have that anybody has yet cosponsored it, at least needs not the information I've been given. So there were other pieces of legislation, and I will say that they have not been introduced yet, one of them having to do with voting. But I will be going into more detail on Saturday morning as part of the state, it's part of the National President's Report.
Thank you.
We are really having a lot of education here during this town hall meeting. And our next question will be coming from Mr. Michael Loft. He is our technician for everything that we're doing here at our state convention. And we just appreciate him. And Michael, what would be your question to?
Good morning. My question has to do with what has the NFB done and is currently doing to assist persons who want to get the COVID vaccine and assist those who need to be tested, especially in many areas where the only options are drive-through?
Okay, so the National Federation of the Blind has been very active in this area. We are gathering data to monitor what's, what the challenges are and the access barriers are to getting COVID vaccines as well as testing. You know, we have to know what the problems are that blind people face when we're trying to, you know, get vaccinated or be tested. So there is a survey, and I do want to alert you to that, that we are asking people to take, to talk about their experience because we we need to know what's happening about this very, very important, you know, process. You know, because we need to know things like, you know, how are you finding traveling to a vaccination site or a testing site? Are you having any problems if, once you get to the site, filling out paperwork that they require you to fill out? If you have to go online, is the site accessible to you? If you, you know, is your town or municipality, you know, where traveling is tough, allowing for a walk-up option or in-home option for purposes of the vaccine? So I will say that President Rick Obono, the minute that we knew that the vaccines were available, he reached out at the end of December to the then Secretary of Health and Human Services, and, you know, advised them that we had a right to fair and equal access to the vaccine, and that we wanted to make sure that blind people could could have that. Then in February, when it was, when the vaccines were being distributed in the states, he wrote to all of the 50 state governors, the officials in Puerto Rico, and the District of Columbia. And he offered our Center for Excellence and Nonvisual Access to assist with making sure that people had the ability to sign up to go, you know, get the vaccine. So it's things like that. And then finally, in late July, we reached an agreement with a company called Curative, Inc. that provides, that would provide an accessible means for blind people in California and some other states to sign up for the vaccine and the test. And it is going to be, the agreement is supposed to last for four years. There will be monitoring. And like I said earlier, you know, if you are having any difficulties, you do need to get in touch with Valerie Yingling and let her know, as well as taking the survey. But we we know how important this is to blind people across the nation. This is a public health crisis, and we want to make sure that we are able to access both the vaccine and the COVID test.
So thank you for that, Michael, and thank you for that, Denise.
Next with a question for Ms. Avant is Mr. Kane Broland, who is President of the Michwaka Chapter in Indiana. So Kane, what is your question?
Yes, and welcome, Denise. Really glad you made it to Indiana for this convention. And I think that there are some things in common between the state that you represent and the state that I represent. You're also based in a state where there are huge resource disparities that exist between different regions. So what's available to blind citizens located in a highly populated and highly funded area like Chicagoland might be very different from what's available for the citizens living in Peoria, or Belleville, or Cairo. And I'm kind of in that position too, in northern Indiana, where Indianapolis seems to get a lot of the attention and a lot of the funding. And there is no state organization for the blind, per se, that makes things equitable. So what are some best practices you could recommend that I could employ as a chapter president to be sure that folks in northern, north-central Indiana can get training and services that they need to move their lives forward and live the life they want? Thank you.
Okay. So, you know, you're right in that, you know, in Chicago, not only do, and in the Chicagoland area, of course, we have access to a lot of different services, but we also have access to a robust rapid transit system for people to be able to get to services. And that, of course, is not the case with small towns and rural areas. And so we know that, you know, getting blind people services that will help them live the lives they want are definitely a problem. And that's where a good, strong nearby chapter is really key in those areas, a chapter of the National Federation of the Blind. Because we know that, you know, parents of blind children and newly blinded adults need information so that they can know the possibilities of what they can access to achieve their their goals and that they can access the information. So one thing I thought about when, you know, thinking about your question, and, you know, something we tried to do, is you can get someone in your chapter, or if you wanted to do it yourself, who would be in charge of outreach. And, you know, it might be outreach over Zoom, which is now available to us. That's the one thing we have gained from the pandemic. Or in some cases, we might, you know, you might have to actually drive to in-person events, or, you know, have somebody drive you. Let me put it that way. So that you can meet and talk to blind people and tell them about programs that we in the National Federation of the Blind have, such as the Braille Enrichment Literacy and Learning Program. The, you can talk about the three training centers where they can go and receive rehabilitation services. So Blind Inc. in Minnesota, the Colorado Center, as well as the Louisiana Center for the Blind. You know, so going to places like farmers markets and other things to get to to get the word out to blind people is definitely helpful. And you can always have literature that you can take to, you know, for different places to keep on hand and distribute in their local communities. And if I recall correctly, the NFB of Indiana has a very good relationship with the Indiana School for the Blind. So you can make contact with the families in the school that 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 live in the area and maintain that contact while the child is in school. And it urged the parents to come to convention and call into chapter meetings and join the Parents of Blind Children Division, you know, all of those kinds of things. The other thing, and this came up in a resolution at the convention this past year, is that we need to get in contact with doctors at the various big eye centers where people are first diagnosed with a a a problem that is going to cause blindness so that we can tell them that, you know, blindness is not all doom and gloom. It's not doom and gloom at all. And we need to tell them what's available so that they can give it to blind parents, blind veterans, newly blinded adults. I can tell you that in Illinois, we often receive information from the Parents of Blind Children Division from their Facebook page, where a parent who has signed on from Illinois looking for help, we get that information. And we have someone, Debbie Stein, who keeps in contact with the parents. And, you know, when we did in-home Bell for the summer of 2021 and 2020, we found that we connected with parents in rural areas that basically would not have come to Chicago or Springfield if we had been meeting in person. So again, that's where the the pandemic was actually a positive thing because we were able to make the connection with families. And the other thing is because of Zoom, and and I understand that, you know, in in remote, in rural areas, you don't have good Wi-Fi often, but Zoom always has a phone option. And most, most of the time, you can, you know, dial in. So you can put on webinars, you know, talking about what's available. And then try to, you know, get families on. And, you know, you know, talk about how to use, you know, like something like Jaws with Windows applications or how to use their iPhone, anything that will try to get people connected to our organization. But the approach is definitely, you know, has to be a hands-on approach by the chapter president and someone who is designated. You can't wait for people to come to you. You have to find a way to to get to them.
Thank you.
I'm Danny Wayne Beamer, Program Manager of the Elder Blind Program at the Will Center in Terre Haute, Indiana. I introduce the NFB Newsline to seniors in 13 southwestern counties in Indiana. I also utilize the NFB Newsline for my radio station public affairs shows. The NFB Newsline, experience it today.
Learn more by calling 855-963-6476 or visit nfbnewsline-in.org.
Our next question comes from Ms. Abby Fleaner, and she's with the At Large Chapter. As once again, I'll state that that is a newly formed chapter here in the state of Indiana, and we're glad to have her. So Abby, what is your question to our national rep, Ms. Denise Avant?
Good morning. My question is, as a female in the organization and a citizen of the United States, does the organization have an opinion on civil rights matters such as Roe versus Wade? And how they, how that affects blind women? Pros and cons?
Okay, so it's Abby, good morning, or good evening, I should say. As I I I will say that, as you know, Roe versus Wade is a highly charged issue. It is a political issue in many, for many. We don't have a position on the case itself, to my knowledge. It would not be the type of thing that we would talk about. But I will tell you two things. Number one, we always, when it comes to any kind of medical access, want to, you know, have have fought for the right of blind people to be able to access any sort of medical information, medical, you know, treatment, or procedures, or whatever a person would would see so that you're not excluded on the basis of blindness. And also, as you know, we have and continue to fight for the right of blind people to to be parents. But the actual direct issue itself, I, we don't have a position on on it at all.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we have a question from Ms. Jessica Dalton for our representative. And Jessica, what is your question?
Hello, Mrs. Avant. My name is Jessica Dalton, and I'm a member of the Circle City Chapter of Indianapolis. And my question to you is, with the new initiative of Blind Equality Achievement Month, could you please explain what the goals and objectives are? Thank you.
Okay, so Blind Equality Achievement Month, formerly known as Meet the Blind Month, is really to highlight the abilities and achievements and the contributions of blind people across the country. We know that blindness is viewed by many as a tragedy, something that will prevent you from going forward with your life. But we in the Federation know that blindness is not the thing that defines you or your future. And so we're seeking to raise the expectations of society about our accomplishments. And so, and to let the public know that we live a positive and productive lives. Blind Equality Achievement Month is an opportunity not just to invite the public to meet a blind person, but also to, you know, partner with us in raising these expectations. And so each chapter is asked to come up with an idea where we can feature the accomplishments and achievements of blind people and to maybe videotape your outing or your event. And you can, you know, share them on our website. I know I was looking at nfb.org, which is our website, and it listed lots of things that different chapters around the country are doing to highlight the achievements of blind people. We, on, I think it's the 14th of- We, on, I think it's the 14th of October, no, yeah, it is the 14th of October, there's going to be an employment panel where people who are employed are going to be talking about how they do their various jobs, their day in their, their life of going to work and how they use technology on the job. And this is going to be a webinar that we invite people to attend. So you, and you heard, at least on the website, I'm sorry, there's a blog post by President Rick Obano on blindness, equality, and achievement, who defines us. And like I said, that's found on our website. So we're doing various things to celebrate the, the, the month, centering, doing activities that center around White Care, Cane Awareness Day, what, whatever people want to do.
Ms. Avant and Jessica, thank you for your question.
Florence, I would say we have been learning quite a bit, and I'm trusting that everyone in this town hall meeting is learning a lot as well. That's what it's made for. Thank you so much, Denise. So our next guest up is Mr. Tyler Shirk, and he's with the, he's, matter of fact, he's the new president of the At Large Chapter here in the state of Indiana. So Tyler, I just want to say welcome, and you can ask your question to our national rep.
Good morning, Denise.
Morning, Tyler.
What made you switch career paths from journalism to political science? Does political science have more in-depth for, for wanting to be a lawyer?
Well, let me answer your second question first. No, it does not. I think the requirement of becoming a lawyer is that you are able to read and write and, and communicate orally well. So, you know, you could have, you could be a political science major, you could be an English major, you could be an economics major, whatever major you, you want to pick so long as you have those skills. So I switched from journalism, which was an initial major when I started out. And it's like most freshmen and sophomores do, you go down to college and you think you want to major in one thing, but then something attracts you and you change your, your, your mind. So I did have to fulfill a political science requirement. And so I took a constitutional law class. And I read a lot of cases surveying the United States Supreme Court, namely those cases that had to do with civil rights, criminal procedure rights that were given to people in the 30s, 40s, 50s, and 60s. And I saw how the law could be used to really benefit people. And I've always been interested in some kind of public service, anything to, you know, help people in a public manner. So that caused me to really want to go to law school because I was really energized and fulfilled by reading some of those, those cases. And so that's why I switched.
That's awesome.
And next up is Mr. Dennis Manning of the Lafayette Chapter. He's the president. Dennis, your question?
What are the legislative alerts and what is the importance of these alerts?
So we have a listserv of legislative directors, and each of the affiliates are asked to put a point to people from their state so that they can go on the listserv. And the purpose of the listserv is for someone like John Perey, who you often see, Jeff, Jeff Kalak or Kyle Walz, to come on and tell us about important information regarding our legislative priorities. We are, of course, an organization that takes collective action to advocate on behalf of blind people. So, you know, we'll often see, you know, them coming in with regard to, let's say, something like the Access Technology Affordability Act, HR 431 S 212, and say, okay, we've got these many cosponsors we need for the legislative directors to, you know, call and write their legislatures. And if you, if, you know, here's what you can say when you call or write them. So that lets us know that we need to get on, you know, and, and really get to the membership. The other way too, is that when we have immediate action that we need to take, that's an immediate way for them to let us know, you know, what's going on. So you know, tomorrow, there's a meeting of the Ability One Commission. And so on, yesterday, there was a posting asking us at least one member from every state to register to attend the meeting because they are going to be talking about the competitive integrated employment for Ability One programs. And because this, you know, we wanted to make sure that we had geographical diversity, they asked at least one member from every state to call in. And this is in particularly because this week, our governor in Illinois, Governor Prisker, has signed an executive order banning subminimum wages for people with disabilities on state use contracts. And last week, there was an announcement that California Governor Newsom had signed a law that will ban subminimum wages for people with disabilities by 2025. And so we see that there's momentum to get rid of payment of subminimum wages to people with disabilities. And we want to make sure that we're at the table and we can really push for this outlawing subminimum wages wherever possible. And then finally, the purpose is that, you know, the state legislatures are doing various things and they'll write in and either update or ask questions about different things that they're doing in their state. So the most prominent one is the parental rights for the blind legislation that many states, such as Indiana, are trying to get through. So this is, these are the functions of the legislative alerts, really.
Thank you, Dennis and Denise.
I am a blind vendor, and one of the things that I truly miss is reading Vending Times Magazine.
Hoosiers can hear Indiana magazines, circulars, national magazines, and information from across the globe. Learn more by calling 855-963-6476 or visit nfbnewsline-in.org.
It is a fantastic service.
Subscribe free to NFB Newsline today.
Last but not least, we have Dr. Yvette Reed, who is a Circle City Chapter member. And Dr. Reed, go on with the question that you have for our representative.
Good morning, Ms. Avant. Thank you for being here. I want to ask, our president has declared October Blind Equality Achievement Month. Given the disparities in employment in other areas in the lives of our blind community, NFBDI of Indiana has proposed that we look at using the word equity rather than equality. Can you give us a little what you think about that in terms of, we, we were thinking of a resolution. Can you give us your ideas about the equity versus equality issue?
Well, first of all, Dr. Reed, let me say thank you to both, to you and Kane Brolin and Dr. Fant and Lee Martin for the article that you all wrote in the October Braille Monitor, which is the National Federation of the Blind's flagship publication. I want to thank Gary Wonder, the publications editor, for putting it in there. And I have to be honest, I had not really thought about this question in any detail, but reading your article, it, it's, it's left me with a lot of different thoughts. I do serve on the Commission on Disability Rights in the American Bar Association, and I have seen the term equity really being used in the last two to three years. And perhaps it's not new to those who really work in the area of diversity, equity, and inclusion. But, you know, we, we used to just see Diversity and Inclusion Committee, or Diversity that, that, that a business should have, Diversity and Inclusion. We never, you know, saw the term inequity, but, equity. But as I say, I, I, I'm sure that it's not new. And, you know, I can actually say that I think that it's important to really consider equity. I'm, am someone with intersect, who's like, with my intersectional marginalized communities, I'm a black American, I'm a woman, I'm blind. I, I, I do see the need to talk about equity more. You know, the American Constitution, as well as the Civil Rights Act of 1964, and the Americans with Disability Act say that, you know, I am, I have equal rights under the law. But the way our political, educational, and economic systems are set up, I know I'm not treated the same as, let's say, someone who is white male and doesn't have any disabilities. I don't necessarily enjoy the same services and the same benefits. Now, I, I, I was fortunate as a child growing up to be in spaces where I could get some benefits. But if I had just stayed and been confined to just the inner city of Chicago, I'm not sure that I would be able to have been successful in my educational endeavors. So, you know, I, I, I think that equity and that it means that you apply the services, you know, the, based on a person's needs, and not just say we all start out the same, because we don't. I, I think that's important. And I think that is something that we in the Federation ought to consider. I was part of the discussions, but because equity and equality are, while they're not the same, they're very closely related, I, I'm thinking that perhaps they, we should really consider, considering both of the terms in our pledge. But we should do that only after we get a lot of comments and, you know, consideration from our members. Because you know, there's going to be considerable pushback, and we have to be ready to answer questions that people have. And we have to be able to show people that while it may appear that they're losing something, that we're actually gaining something.
Thank you so much. I, I absolutely agree. I, thank you so much.
Now, this concludes our town hall meeting. And Representative Avant, do you have any pointing words for affiliates?
Well, once again, I enjoyed the questions that I received from your members. I was energized by their questions. I'm looking forward to the, the convention that's coming up. And it was so wonderful to be a part of this. And I thank you for thinking about me, to have me do this, this, this event, and also to do it in this way. Because I was, it gave me a chance to talk about the National Federation of the Blind as opposed to talking about me.
And thank you so very much.
And Denise, I just want to say also, thank you so very much for all that you do for the Federation, for your community, for your family. Without people like you around, this whole life would just be totally different. So I'm just thankful to have you at our state convention. And I'm also thankful to have you around as a friend. So to our viewing and listening audience, and to our listeners here at the town hall meeting, we at the National Federation of the Blind Newsline Indiana, would like to thank you once again for joining us. And we trust that you continue to join us as we continue to advocate and bring education to our communities. So until next time, take good care, and may God bless each of you.
The National Federation of the Blind, Newsline Indiana. For more information, go to nfb-in.org or call 855-963-6476. That's 855-963-6476. The National Federation of the Blind encourages you to live the life you want.